Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our May 14th County Commission meeting. I called the meeting to order, and at this time, I call on Vice Chair Commissioner Brian Welch for the invocation and the pleasure of allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe we have Luke Harper here from Braverville First Baptist Church. If you wouldn't mind standing up at the lectern there and delivering our prayer, we'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for the invitation. Grateful to be here.
Mr. Harper, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I literally just walked in the door, so I don't have your bio in front of me, but I know that you are the new pastor at Braverville First Baptist.
Yes, sir.
Which is, if you all are aware, is one of our big churches there along Thomasville Road. You know, we've got a whole plethora of big churches there between St. Peter's and the New Mormon Temple. And Braverville First Baptist has been there a long time, and I know they've been without a pastor for a while, so welcome and congratulations on your new appointment, and thank you for coming in for us at the last minute.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Been in Tallahassee for six weeks now, but it is really an honor to be here. And obviously, in a time in Tallahassee right now, there's no better time for us to be praying than for all who've been affected from the storms and the things that have happened in the last few days. So if you would, join me in prayer. Lord, we just come to you today as we gather to meet and to discuss the things that affect the area that you've called us to serve. Lord, we just, my heart has been, it makes me long for heaven when you see things like this happen. And, Lord, we know that you're sovereign and that you are in control, but, Lord, we pray for all of those who have been affected by this storm, all the families, all of the just workplaces that have been destroyed. There's so many pieces to be picked up right now. And so what I pray right now, just as the town recovers and, Lord, people are trying to pick up the pieces of what's been, what's happened, Lord, I pray that your peace that surpasses all understanding would just be the theme of their lives right now, that you would be the comforter that we know you'd be. We pray that you go before this meeting, Lord, that you would lead us to be good stewards and be found faithful to what you've entrusted to us in the roles that we've been given here. We ask this all in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, for that very appropriate and timely invocation. And now, we have a proclamation recognizing May as Bike Week. Are there any representatives from the Bike Association present with us received? Absolutely. If you would, join me at the podium, please.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Eric Draper. I am with Florida Bicycle Association, also Capital Cities Cyclists.
And then we'll get comments from you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. This is the proclamation. I'll let you hold it here. But it says that throughout, whereas throughout the month of May, Leon County will celebrate the joys of riding bikes and the well-being it inspires within us. And whereas May 13 through 19, 2024 is Bike to Work Week, and May 17, 2024 is Bike to Work Day. And whereas millions nationwide engage in bicycling as an environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and a renewed form of quality family recreation. And where cycling organizations and independent cyclists throughout our community are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operations and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities. And whereas Leon County's vast network of on-road and off-road trails support the livelihood of our citizens, and whereas Visit Tallahassee is promoting bicycle use as a means of transportation and recreation to attract more visitors to enjoy our local park trail systems, restaurants, hotels, retail establishments, and cultural and scenic attractions. Now therefore, our Carolyn Cummings, by the authority vested in me as Chair of the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, do proclaim the month of May 2024 as Bike Month in Leon County and urge all citizens to participate by taking a bike ride to explore our beautiful community. So this is presented to you. It's signed by our county administrator and the commissioner. So congratulations to you. Would you lack a word? Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings, and thank you to the rest of the commission and the county and the county staff, of course, for providing so many excellent facilities to make Leon County a safer place to ride. Florida leads the nation, unfortunately, in bicycle deaths and serious injuries, and we appreciate everything that you're doing, everything that law enforcement is doing to help to make our roads safer and to expand the network of facilities that we have so that more people can go out and safely enjoy the opportunity to ride and be fit, as you noticed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to ask my Vice Chair, Commissioner Welch, to the podium. He's going to make a very special presentation to an individual who is retiring.
I beg your pardon, I've got a little bit of a, some kind of bizarre springtime cold going on. Well, I have the great privilege of presenting a proclamation today. One of our, one of our bravest leaders here in Leon County, Assistant Sheriff Steve Harrelson's retiring or retired already, right? You already, you already technically?
Starting.
Okay, getting close. Um, you know, as Leon County Commission, you know, we have given full-throated support to our great sheriff who we appreciate, and we know that his staff and his leadership team do a great job, and his deputies do a great job. And Assistant Sheriff Harrelson is a great example of that, so I'm going to read him this proclamation and then let you say a few words. And, uh, and, uh, so here we go. This is probably going to be long and take a while, so y'all dig in. I mean, it's probably quite a career, I'm sure, here, is this sheriff. Whereas it is with profound gratitude and respect that we pay tribute to Assistant Sheriff Steve Harrelson for his remarkable service and dedication throughout his tenure with the Leon County Sheriff's Office. And whereas Assistant Sheriff Harrelson has served the residents of Leon County, Florida with unwavering commitment, professionalism, and integrity for 35 years, leaving an indelible mark on our community through his exemplary leadership and tireless efforts. And whereas Assistant Sheriff Harrelson's distinguished career has been characterized by his steadfast dedication to upholding the highest standards of law enforcement, ensuring the safety and security of our citizens, and fostering positive relationships with diverse communities across Leon County. And whereas his leadership and vision played a pivotal role in starting the Fraud Alert Fax System, a mass notification to financial institutions for fraud-related crimes and suspects, as well as creating the fingerprint identification system for local financial institutions which greatly decreased forged checks. Whereas Assistant Sheriff Harrelson's unwavering commitment to service, his compassion for others, and his unwavering dedication to the principles of justice and equality have earned him the respect and admiration of his colleagues, peers, and the community at large, which attributes him, oh, I don't know if that's right, we got some bad spelling in there, which affords him, I'm going to say, being awarded the LCSO Medal of Meritorious Service for Exceptional Service. And whereas Assistant Sheriff Harrelson embarks on a well-deserved retirement, it is fitting and proper that we take this opportunity to express our deepest appreciation for his outstanding contributions, leadership, and dedication to the Leon County Sheriff's Office and the residents of Leon County. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, hereby proclaims May 14th as Assistant Sheriff Steve Harrelson Day in recognition of his exceptional service, leadership, and dedication to the Leon County Sheriff's Office and the community. And be it further resolved that a copy of this proclamation be presented to Assistant Sheriff Steve Harrelson as a token of our sincere appreciation and best wishes for a happy, healthy, and fulfilling retirement. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Leon County, Florida to be affixed as 14th day, Steve Harrelson Day, of May 2024, signed by everybody and attested to by the county administrator. Y'all give him a big round of applause.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Welch and Commissioners, for this honor. When we raise our hand to serve this community, we don't look for any kind of recognition for it. It is a calling for us to do, and it has been an honor to protect and serve the citizens of Leon County now for these past 35 years, and it has been an honor to serve with the folks that are wearing the uniform behind me. And Sheriff McNeil, thank you for allowing me to continue my mission and to bring it to an end. I thank you. Deputy sheriffs are a different breed. A deputy sheriff is a law enforcement officer, but a deputy sheriff, no matter our rank, we're all deputy sheriffs. A deputy sheriff is all things to all people. No matter what it is, the job needs to be done, that's what a deputy will do. And thank you, and I thank the citizens of Leon County for allowing me to do that for the past 35 years. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I think there's a couple of us that probably were like toddlers when Assistant Sheriff Harrelson started protecting and serving. So, yeah, by all means.
Thank you. I just wanted to say congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. Thank you for your years of service and echo what you said, that deputy sheriffs, and especially our Leon County deputy sheriffs, I consider as the highest form of law enforcement that I've ever interacted with. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Assistant Sheriff Harrelson, just wanted to thank you for your service. Thank you for keeping us safe. I try to teach my girls whenever we see law enforcement at the grocery store to stop by and say, "Thank you for keeping us safe," and I really can't put it any better than that right now. One question, though, what are you planning to do after you retire? You be fishing or golfing or any big plans?
I got a large honey-do list I got to take care of first.
Good husband, all right. Thank you very much for your service, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve, just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you on behalf of all the men and women of Leon County. Like so many of the sheriff's team, we consider you part of the team, obviously, at Leon County. We've been through an awful lot together, and we've used you in so many capacities, I can't even, I'm sure the resolution gets to it, and I wanted to let you know that you're violating the sheriff's beard policy right now, but I could, no, I'm just kidding. Anyway, just, just thanks again on behalf of the whole team, Steve. We wish you a very happy retirement.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Deputy Harrison, I too echo the sentiment of all of my fellow commissioners, the sheriff, and I know your fellow officers as well. We appreciate the great job you've done providing protection to the citizens, and we certainly wish you Godspeed in your retirement. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's give him another big round of applause. And now, I'd like to welcome to the podium of Mr. Keith Bowers, who's going to make a very, very special presentation to achievements of the Office of Economic Vitality and whoever he'd like to come up with him. I'll allow him to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Have two special presentations today that reflect the economic strength of our community. The first presentation, the Office of Economic Vitality received the 2024 Regional Economic Development Deal of the Year Award presented by the Florida Economic Development Council for our Amazon project. We were competing with other economic development organizations to receive this award, but I think what really put us over the edge was the community involvement that took place when we were making sure that Amazon was going to be a good fit for our community. One of the things that stood out, and I think distinguished our application from others, was the fact that when Amazon first started talking to our community in 2021, to receive funds from the, or commitment of allocation of tax rebates from the Target Business Program, they committed to 1,000 jobs, capital investment of $200 million, and anticipated $114 million in economic impact. But as last reporting from Amazon, as of March 1st, they have created over 2,000 jobs, paying $17 an hour. Their capital investment has increased from $200 million to $250 million. And what's so special about this as well is that over, out of the 2,000 employees that are working as associates at Amazon, 42% come from our area's zip codes that have historically the highest unemployment rate. So those are 32304, 32303, and 32301. Of note also, with the capital investment of $250 million, $27 million went to 16 local firms, and an additional $37 million went to 25 minority and economically disadvantaged-owned firms. So I think this is what really pushed us over the edge. We couldn't have done this project without the involvement of all of you here to help facilitate the, introducing the Amazon Fulfillment Center to our community, and we are just more than happy to be acknowledged and recognized in this regard. So thank you for your hard work. The other information that I wanted to share with you today, you probably read in the newspaper that Tallahassee Leon County MSA has been ranked as the strongest economy in the United States of America. And I'll just read a few things that have prepared. You know, economic strength is a multifaceted achievement. It signifies not just growth, but sustainable and, a sustainable and diverse economy that can withstand challenges and continues to provide opportunities for its people. Top ranking, this top ranking reflects the innovative initiatives, sound policies, and community-driven projects that have shaped the Tallahassee Leon County into a vibrant Area Development Magazine primarily targets corporate site selection professionals and facility planning professionals, including C-suite executives, site selection consultants, real estate professionals, economic development organizations. And the readers are often decision-makers in looking, decision-makers looking for information on business location, relocation, expansion, and economic trends that affect industries and communities. The content caters to those seeking insights into optimizing location choices to support operational success and strategic growth. Area Development partnered with a Virginia-based firm called Jamura Economics and Analytics to crunch the numbers and compile the data. Jamura Analytics ranked all 384 metropolitan statistical areas across 24 economic and workforce indicators pulled from eight different data sets and analyzed the data over a five-year change, a three-year change, and a one-year change. Some important factors include the local gross domestic product, how the GDP is trending, unemployment rates, what types of jobs are growing, and how will employers' needs match the, what the labor market has to offer. It also highlights activities in such hot sector areas as high-tech, manufacturing, research and development, and other occupations linked to science, technology, engineering, and math. The areas that fared the best in this ranking are poised for long-term growth, and there are hubs of high-tech industry where workers may benefit from affordable cost, from an affordable cost of living. So I would like to commend the county commission, the county administrator, and every individual who has contributed to making the Tallahassee Leon County a leader in economic development. This recognition calls on us to continue our efforts to create sustainable, a sustainable and inclusive economy that benefits every member of the community. And we are just getting started. We realize that there is work to do in our communities. We are focused on that, laser-focused on that through efforts through the Minority Women's Small Business Enterprise Program, led and directed by Deputy Darryl Jones. We are focused on making sure that opportunities are made available for, opportunities are made available for folks who want to enter the workforce through our talent development programs and initiatives. And we will continue to push the needle to make sure that everyone in Leon County has an opportunity to participate in the American dream. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bowers, for that presentation. This is what, you're presenting this to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, this is 2024 Regional Deal of the Year, Office of Economic Vitality, and that has Amazon on the left. So on behalf of the county, and I know the commissioners have something they want to say as well, but I'd just like to say, we certainly appreciate you, school member Darryl Jones, for all your leadership, and we certainly appreciate Office of Economic Vitality. I think we all stick our chests out, and this county administrator and others had a hand in bringing Amazon here, and it has been a game changer. And so we certainly thank you and applaud you for making us look really, really good. So let's give him another round of applause, and I'd like to invite any, Mr. County Administrator, we'll start with you.
Madam Chair, just wanted to thank the moment, Commissioners, I think you all recognize this very well, the, you know, for as long as I've been around here and even before that, the diversification of our economy has been a priority of this board and previous boards. And again, just so critically important to see and, and, you know, encouraging to see that all of that work and that priority and that emphasis pay off like this. Area Development is the industry magazine, as Keith said, that is geared towards site selection consultants and the C-suite executives that are really the decision-makers when it comes to making important decisions about, you know, moving their businesses and relocations and expansions and that sort of thing. So again, just to see us where we are now, I need to tell you, this, this isn't pay-to-play, this magazine, this is, this is, this wasn't an application, we didn't apply for this or anything like that. In fact, to be perfectly truthful with you, it was out about three months before we knew it. And, and it's really impressive, the, the advanced sort of metrics that they get into in evaluating this stuff is, they take it very, very seriously, and just wanted to underscore that, and thank you, Keith, for your leadership. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Keith, just want to reiterate that, and, you know, obviously, your office does a great job, and the decisions that this board collectively with our blueprint board has made over the last several years have really paid off and really come to fruition in a way that should be obvious to everybody in the community that we are really trying to grow a private-sector economy here. And I think that the county administrator individually deserves a lot of credit specifically for Amazon. He did a very heavy lift on that job in and of himself to help land that in coordination with the O E V and Deputy Administrator Jones. But also, I think we should give a nod of congratulations to former O E V Director Christina Paredes, who played a huge role in a lot of, landing a lot of those deals as well. So Keith, you have picked up the ball and carried it across the finish line in many, many cases, and you are doing a great job, and I just want you guys to know that we support what you're doing. I support what you're doing. I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think we all do support what you're doing. You're doing a great job. Tallahassee is clearly a place where people want to be, where businesses want to relocate, where businesses want to invest their capital, and, and that's because you are the face of, of, of our growing economy, right there. You're the one that they see and sit down with probably more than, before they meet with anybody else. And so keep up the good work. This is obviously just, not just planting a flag on the moon, but kind of planting a flag on Mars and saying, hey, this is the place you want to colonize your business. You know what I'm saying? So good job and congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Commissioner Proctor.
I was hoping that, that Mr. Darryl Jones would have said, "You may applaud." I was looking for that. And, but even without being on that cue, we applaud. Certainly, we've come a long way, Miss Christina Paredes definitely had a voice. If there's any doubt about our support, I think we kicked in a million or two on a blind date going out, searching for this partnership with Amazon. So the citizens of our community have kicked in monies. I don't know the measures of when the, so much of tax remission will occur, but certainly it was a first-class effort by all of our staff and going forward, and well-satisfied. I just want to say that, on this note, that the emerging industry in healthcare, I'm very, very pleased to see the agreement with Appalachia, Florida State, and T M H, an area of mental health. And to the extent that we can pour fertilizer to stimulate that emergence, I would certainly think that we're well-qualified with that medical school focusing its energy into that. I know we don't think of that as a economic development, but I can assure you, if we get the infrastructure here, our economy around caring for those of mental health would just boom, and I hope that we could support that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Minor.
Hey, Madam Chair. Mr. Bowers, Mr. Jones, everybody at O E V, the entire community, the private sector, want to thank everybody for making this happen. This is really exciting news, and probably the, the best long-term way for us to address poverty, affordable housing shortages, crime, food insecurity, is to grow the economy, grow jobs, and in particular, increase median income. Because when we do that, we, you know, the, the rising tide lifts all the boats, and it gives us more resources in local government to address poverty, crime, food insecurity, affordable housing shortages, and that type of thing. So this is incredible news. So this is incredible news. Uh, I just want to thank everyone at O E V, everyone at, uh, uh, for the, the three chambers, everybody that's had anything to do with this, to contribute to this economy, uh, because this is a big success story. There, there's no way we can promote this story loudly enough to justify the good news that it is, uh, but this is a good start, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to thank Keith and Deputy Director Jones and all the staff for the work that you put in and the great things that have been done to get us where we are today. Um, I think of business as an infinite game in that, uh, we baby, we're, we're number one on top today when we look at it, but there's still a lot of things we have to, we have to conquer and, and deal with. Back when we first started this journey, Commissioner Proctor, it was the, Tallahassee's only good for government jobs, uh, and we were desperately trying to figure out how we diversify our economy. Uh, now we've gotten to that point where we're recognized for the diversity in our economy, but now it's become a, a issue of wage and, and living poor, that kind of thing. One thing I know about the folks that we have sitting in this room working on economic development is that if we give you a task, you get it done. And so, I look, I'm, I'm, I'm excited about what we've been able to accomplish, um, but I'm looking forward to what we can do with the new challenge that we face and making sure that the folks who live here make a, a livable wage, that we're leading the way in bringing in industries that are going to present that. Uh, Amazon did exactly that. I do want to speak on the fact that Amlon, Amazon did exactly what they said they were going to do, uh, if we gave them the opportunity, and more. Uh, and those are the kind of deals we look forward, and I know you ushered that home, so I just want to thank you and say congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Uh, I, I certainly agree, this is a great moment for Leon County, our community, Tallahassee, and what I want to do is invite the commissioners, any of your staff, I think we, I think it calls for, uh, a great picture of everybody because we all, Mr. County Administrator?
On my way.
Yeah, oh, around that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Oh, you have a comment, Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Ceban?
I also would like to just commend O E V and Keith, your entire team, um, you, Leila Segal, Darryl Jones, you guys just, you have an incredible team, I appreciate all the hard work you guys do, and, you know, our, our business community, jobs, you know, that's, that's the base of our community, so thank you.
Thank you. If we'll just gather right in front of the, uh, commissioners, as yours. Okay. Okay, I'd like to thank everyone for your cooperation and participation. Uh, Mr. County Administrator, do we have any speakers on non-agended items or consent items?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two speakers on non-agended items. The first speaker is Brenda Griffith, to be followed by Ryan Stokes.
Good afternoon.
Happy to correct the record and let you know, my name is Brittany Griffith. Okay. Um, I reside in the Hillwood subdivision. The subdivision is located off of Edenfield Road across from, across Micasuki from the Micasuki Greenway. I, along with my neighbors, Ryan Stokes is one of them, we have two more in the audience over there, um, seek your support and leadership in resolving the ongoing flooding issues occurring in our neighborhood. Commissioner Wells, you may remember some of my emails. Um, I am personally impacted by, in some areas, calf-high water on our property. This water is flowing into my neighborhood from the Micasuki Greenway. For context, our yards were beginning to flood before this newest rain event yesterday, but flooding rains never help, do they? As it stands now, the massive amount of water that has accumulated along Micasuki in the Greenway is still destined to travel through our neighborhood, uh, which will result in additional flooding events. In addition to the increased water flow coming into our neighborhood, presumably water flow, which has greatly increased due to the recent canopy development on Mulane, there also appears to be a stormwater issue that is presenting, preventing the water from flowing off of all of our properties. This is causing the water to back up at least three properties deep over approximately an acre each. Last month, a berm also held this water in, causing the water to accumulate about 20 or more inches of the structure of my home and a knee height above my pool. This berm has since been taken down, which has kept the water off my house and my pool deck, however, substantial flooding remains. And it will continue until both the stormwater flow and the need for stormwater retention areas are addressed. My neighbors and I in the Hillwood subdivision do not, have not, and will not consent to being stormwater retention properties for the county. We continue to work with Brent Pell, Ben Penigree, and their teams on this issue, but more work remains. To the extent expert, expertise or, or additional resources are needed to investigate and responsibly resolve these stormwater issues, we appreciate your support in obtaining those resources for the county. We appreciate your leadership and invite you to our neighborhood, the Hillwood subdivision, to see and better understand our very severe flooding issues.
Next up, Ryan Stokes.
Uh, good afternoon. Um, as, uh, Brittany said, um, I also lived in the Hillwood, uh, neighborhood off of, uh, Edenfield. I have lived there for 22 years, and the amount of flooding that we are seeing in our yard is unprecedented. Um, I don't think I have had water standing in my yard, uh, since probably, uh, I think Tropical Storm Fay, maybe, that might have been 12 or 13 years ago, uh, and at that time, water was standing in my front yard. Uh, a month ago, when we had the, the extreme, extreme amount of rain, there was no water in the front, uh, which we all found a little peculiar, um, given that we had, you know, a couple of feet of water in our backyards. So the question became, where did the water come from? Uh, as Brittany said, we believe it's coming from the Greenway side of Micasuki Road, uh, through, um, duck, through Canopy, uh, and Duck Pond. Um, we are pretty confident it's coming from Duck Pond, considering, uh, I found three fish in my yard, um, after the storm, and there is no, uh, pond near my house with fish stuck in it. Uh, so we, we are working with county staff, um, on trying to mitigate, uh, any additional water coming in, but the concern is what is being, what is going to be done going forward to mitigate, um, water being added to our yards. Uh, last week, uh, Tuesday, I believe it was, I woke Tuesday morning, there hadn't been any rain in over a week. Uh, we've been dry for several weeks in our yards, um, since that last storm. I woke Tuesday morning to standing water in my backyard for no apparent reason. By the end of the day, Tuesday, the size of the water had doubled, initially it was the size of this table, by the end of the day, it had doubled in size, and another, another double, that size was saturated when I walked on it. Um, so the water is definitely coming from somewhere, um, and it's not leaving, that's our concern. Um, there is continued, um, you know, property damage being done, uh, won't go into how much I had to, I've had to pay to return my pool to operating condition, uh, I have neighbors on both sides that, uh, they, I don't even know if they've begun working on their pools yet. So, uh, we ask that, uh, you guys, um, provide some leadership and, um, and help us try to figure out a way forward with this and to, uh, prevent any additional water from, uh, encroaching on our properties.
Thank you. Mr. County Administrator, are there any?
That concludes our speakers, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. On our consent agenda, can you advise items that have been pulled?
Madam Chair, uh, items number five, seven, nine, 10, 11, and 13 have been pulled.
Thank you. Uh, the commissioners, what I'd like to do is entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda excluding these particular items.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't want to step on, okay, thank you. Uh, so, Commissioners, the first item pulled is item number five, uh, is your approval of an updated, uh, F D E M statewide mutual aid agreement, um, and, uh, the county's web E O C subscription, and happy to answer any questions it might have. This item was pulled, uh, by Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, uh, this is a very timely, uh, uh, matter that we're being asked to, uh, sign this agreement before, I believe, July, uh, our mutual aid agreement between Leon County and Division of Emergency Management. Wanted to know, uh, more specifically, as I could not determine from the item, what are the services that we render in mutual aid and what services would typically, uh, aside from the software, uh, what tangibly, uh, are we exchanging in the mutual aid agreement?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Proctor. Yeah, and as Kevin comes up, there's an awful lot of mutual aid, so I don't want to get the terms confused here, but there's a tremendous amount of mutual aid that we engage in during disaster events and that sort of thing, and certainly we could talk about all of our existing agreements. This one in particular, and Kevin's happy to do that now as well, but this one in particular has to do with web E O C, a, a specific subscription, subscription agreement. Kevin, if you'd talk about that, and, and again, of course, Kevin's available to talk broader about, uh, our mutual aid agreements.
Yes, sir, and, uh, Commissioner Proctor, the, uh, the, starting with the web E O C, that is the software mechanism that we use to manage all the information management, the, the physical process of typing in a mission request, hitting submit, and it gets reviewed through a technological process. Uh, more broadly, the, the statewide mutual aid agreement, it allows Leon County government, uh, to share resources, whether that's emergency management personnel, it could be public works, EMS, library staff. If another county is experiencing a disaster and needs aid from Leon County, we can send personnel or equipment to help them if they ask. Uh, vice versa, it allows us to request the same thing. Uh, for example, uh, this, this situation, we have asked for, uh, some volunteer coordination assistance, we're having a person, uh, from Bay County Government that will be coming in to help us. It allows us to, um, through other counties or other, uh, municipal partners, cities and towns, uh, or special districts, request if we have a need or if they have a need, it allows us to make that request, and any other party that is a, a signatory to that, uh, if they have those available resources, could deploy those. Additionally, it does, uh, define the mechanisms on how the cost reimbursements will be processed also.
Right. That's kind of vague, so this is an intellectual, uh, uh, exchange of personnel who has expertise in building mountains, or another community has a need, uh, building goldfish bowls, uh, is that what we're talking about? Because we've seen a number of trucks from far west Kent, Ohio, um, and convoys of, of trucks, those are tangible, but I don't see the tangible, uh, mutual what?
Yeah, so this is, is, it, it, there, there is some intention for, um, a, a broad application by jurisdictions because disasters are, are always challenging. Our, our county administrator is, is very, um, very direct after our disasters, that every disaster challenges us in different and new, unique ways. Uh, so that's one of the, the benefits. Uh, you know, some of these other mutual aids are very specific, like the electric mutual aid that, that City of Tallahassee or Taquon Electric has with other electric providers for a very specific resource. Uh, this helps us, uh, provide that flexibility, uh, for the unknowns that disaster brings, uh, when, when you don't, you may not always know which resource you're going to need, so this does provide that, that breadth of service that we can request between jurisdictions.
Okay, and then I, um, saw, uh, it seems like the client's responsibilities is, don't call them after hours, um, and, and all of that. I was looking at client responsibilities, and, um, I, I want to know, why can't we call them? And it, it should be a 24/7 hotline, uh, what are they saying to us?
Is that specific to the web E O C user agreement?
Exhibit B to the web E O C.
Okay, yes, correct. Thank you, sir. Uh, yes, uh, that...
We can't call them after Friday at 5:00?
Uh, we, there is a local capability within, uh, the state, uh, they have 24-hour coverage within their I T unit that can help, um, provide those services. There, there, there will always be, uh, technical, uh, assistance through a, a state customer service representative.
Okay. Is there a cost to Leon County?
No, sir.
Sir?
No, sir.
Okay. I saw where, um, I believe the federal funding has been, um, slacked, and so it seems like the legislature picked up the slack to carry Florida's homeland security component. Is this stable, or is just the one-year, uh, funding?
They, they, they have a request as a standard part of their budget to fund this, uh, annually through the, the state emergency management agency's budget.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to move, uh, options one and two with your staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Is there a second? Commissioner Minor, second. Uh, Mr. Peters, can I just a- ask you a question real fast as well? Uh, in light of this recent, uh, disaster that we had last week, I assume that this particular, uh, mutual aid agreement, uh, was triggered as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Because as soon we, we have outside, um, trucks and municipal, municipalities coming in to assist with the extensive damage that we have, we have suffered.
Yes, ma'am.
So clearly, it's a great benefit.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments, Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Ma- Madam Chair. Uh, we received correspondence, I believe it was directed to, towards you, Miss, uh, Madam Chair, uh, from Elite Business Solutions inquiring about our disaster relief and emergency management contract. Uh, Madam Chair, if you'll mind, Mr. Administrator, will you, will you tell me how that works?
Kevin, I'd have to defer to Kevin on that. You can come on up.
And that is an agenda item that's coming up for discussion as well. Mr. Peters?
Yes, we do have a, a contract currently with, uh, Hagerty Consulting that provides, uh, the aid and assistance to, uh, Leon County for, uh, documenting and, uh, preparing the FEMA Public Assistance Paperwork, uh, that's the reimbursement that's available to local governments, uh, that's currently through, uh, Hagerty Consulting.
Yes, Hagerty?
Hagerty, yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Okay, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye as far as consent agenda item number five.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Thank you so much, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, and on that last item, Commissioner Proctor, I was going to tell you with, uh, Kevin Peters, you know, he runs 911, he can call anyone at any time, just so you know. Uh, Commissioners, item number seven is the board's ratification of your budget workshop, uh, pulled by Commissioner Proctor, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you. Commissioners, uh, staff recommendations are here on page two, and, um, I'm, I'm vacillating, uh, on one of the conditions which we set for the 5% employee raise. Uh, we said under, uh, option one C, that, uh, the county administrator provided analysis of June 18th budget workshop, uh, to consider the 5% across the board. Uh, and then we put a contingency there if preliminary property values from the property appraisal office, debt, retirement, savings, and/or other revenue streams increase above 1.3%. I'm vacillating on that today because, uh, since we've last met, we've had two storms, and we have seen our employees work like beyond dogs, and they have stood and done a yeoman's task, uh, standing in the vanguard in a way which, uh, when we put this language here, um, but I, I need y'all to know, uh, our employees, in light of this, these two storms that we've had less than a month... a month, this is a hard test. They deserve a 5% raise, period, and they have been in forefront, out front. And me and Commissioner Caban were down in Woodville, and when you see our employees there assisting, standing out front, making a difference in such critical times, I'm simply telling y'all, I'm going back on my word. I don't no longer feel like a 5% raise is based on whether or not what the property appraiser got to say. I'm going back on my word. Our people deserve a 5% raise, period, okay? So if it comes and we meet this contingency here, so be it, but I'm going to support a 5% raise based on what I've seen on the street since we've last put these words together. So that's how I'm feeling. I don't know what you feel, but I believe our work has been, I'm proud. And there's nothing in the world this year that even before we get to hurricane season, we don't have two early deliveries of babies, if you will, of storms, and I'm set there. That 5% placeholder, this is a placeholder, but I'm totally sold out, and I just totally believe I've seen too much to leave our men and women not honored by the work they've put in. Secondly, Commissioners, we've asked on the item K, K, that we would bring back an agenda item to consider a funding request from the Tallahassee Housing Authority to assist their efforts in master planning redevelopment of Springfield Apartments. We said that in April. And our agenda item number 16, it does not carry a recommendation, and I'm a little troubled why we don't have a recommendation when we've asked and we've directed the county administrator to bring back this agenda request to support Tallahassee Housing Authority and blah, blah. So I'm looking at that language, and then I get over to 16, and I don't see a recommendation, and I don't like that. And then finally, on this item, Commissioners, I've, I'm asking you all for an item, it's opposite H, I, J, K, L, is that right? J, K, I think M would be the next one, for $3,000 travel increase for 2025 commission budgets, which would have an impact of $21,000 on this budget. And that's based on my efforts to plan through the summer, the NACO meeting, a couple of other meetings we've got. When I tell you all that the prices of travel is crazy, I believe that now is the time that I would suggest that we modify because even in Tallahassee, our numbers are weird. But beyond and outside is an inordinate increase in housing. And based on the inordinate increase of housing from last year to this year, I believe that we warrant for the kind of travel that we're doing, at least $3,000 increment. So I'm asking to modify to add an item M to our recommendations, if you would, and it be brought back to our next, included in our next budget workshop.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. I'm going to ask the county administrator if he will address a couple of the items that you raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very briefly, I think there's a simple explanation on item K that Commissioner Proctor raised was, the board's direction was to bring back an agenda item to consider a funding request on today's date, which of course, we've done. And the reason there's not a recommendation on there was because it conflicts with the previous board direction and a previous board vote to utilize the funding that we've recommended in another way. So again, we've just given the board that flexibility to say, since the, since a previous vote already encumbered some of that funding, you've got the flexibility to decide what you want to do. So again, this is fully consistent with the board's previous action to bring back an agenda item to consider the funding request. So, and with that, should the board prove it, we'd be happy to bring back anything else that the board would wish to consider further.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. So when we get to that agenda item, then we have, as a board, we have authority to look at the analysis provided by the county administrator and the staff. And I think we've got some options there. Some of the money has been obligated, but I think the county administrator and the staff has given us some roadmaps on how to deal with that. So if we can, Commissioner Proctor, if we can deal with that specifically when we get to that agenda item.
Just confusing.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
So my motion, Madam Chair, is that we add an item M to include a $21,000 budget adjustment that each Commissioner's, travel is increased to accommodate the increases which we're facing across the country when we travel to all these conventions and the extraordinary high conference registration fees, or that'll be around $800 and stuff. So I think that that's warranted. That's my motion.
So the motion is to add?
3,000.
M.
M.
So we have L here, so we will be adding a M to increase travel costs and expense by $3,000. Does everybody understand?
For the Commission.
Yeah, for the Commission. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Caban, is there a discussion? Commissioner O'Keefe?
Yes, Commissioner O'Keefe? So similar to last year when we increased our office budgets by 8,000 or 8,500, I'm going to oppose this because we have, we're going to, we have recently, and we're going to run into things where we're going to discuss special funding needs that we have for the most marginalized in our community who are taking tough hits, and also in things like housing and the economy. And I think that when we sometimes get answers that we can only do so much for that, these little things add up, and I think on principle, that our office budgets are satisfactory given the large increase last year, and that we keep our belts tight, to use a phrase I don't actually like to use very often, on this, so that we prioritize other critical needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Caban, before you speak, let me ask the county administrator, with our budgets, if it's not expended each year, does it revert back? Mr. County Administrator?
No, it's not. It's swept into the general revenue.
Okay, then you start over again?
Start over.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Caban?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for the county administrator.
I didn't understand.
I have a question for the county administrator.
Please, yes.
For a point of clarification, whether our office budgets, is it distinguished between like office supplies and travel? So for example, if there's a $3,000 allocation, could we use it for office supplies, communication, or does it have to be for travel?
Let me get Rashonda to come on up real quick, and we try to have a lot of flexibility, and again, if we run into troubles, we'll work with, you know, individual commissioners to reconcile that, but we do have a line item budget within your office budgets, but go ahead, Rashonda.
Commissioners, yes, you do have a line item budget, but you do have flexibility to realign funds within that budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brad.
Commissioners, I'm going to support this, and here's why. I use primarily my office budget to communicate with my constituents. There's a lot of folks in my district that are rural communities, who don't have internet, don't have computers, and we actually sometimes, oftentimes, will send the mail to keep them abreast of what's going on in the community. And we've actually got a lot of feedback from our constituents to our office, especially during the storm using technology that we just had, you know, relaying information and communicating with our constituents. The feedback we've gotten has been, you know, great, and it's been also very useful to connect constituents with services that are available to them. And so, you know, I'm a fan of having tools for us as commissioners to be able to educate and help our constituents, connect them with the resources. I probably personally won't use it for travel, but I like that, having to be able to have it in our tool belt, using it for the right way, and in all of our discretion, to be able to educate our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban. Any other discussion from any other commissioners? If not, I'd like to go on and entertain a vote. So all those in favor?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, real quick.
Oh, I didn't see your hand. I'm sorry.
Would you please have the motion restated?
Yes. Commissioner Proctor's motion is to add an M item. We have items A through L. His motion is to add M, and M would be to increase by $3,000 the budget, the travel budget, which Ms. Bradley indicated, you know, is line item, but is flexible. The usage is flexible.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other, any other questions, Commissioner Minor? Okay. Okay, thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we've got Commissioner Welch, Commissioner Minor, and Commissioner O'Keefe. No. Commissioner Maddox, yes. Commissioner Caban, Commissioner Proctor, yes. And I vote yes. Thank you. Are there any, any other comments, Commissioner Proctor? And I think what we have to do now is vote for item number, consent item number seven. That was your amendment to it.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think this voting for the amendment doesn't encompass the whole item. Am I correct?
Motion.
Motion. Oh, it could, but it did.
It did.
It did, okay. So we passed it with the amendment. Okay, thank you so much. Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, item number nine is seeking your authorization to submit a hazard mitigation grant application for the Munson Slough embankment repair project. That was pulled by Commissioner Proctor. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a little hypersensitive on some items relative, in particular, so much is coming up in the timing of this storm. And this item, actually, we seek Florida Vision of Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grant, which is $1.2 million for the Munson Slough Embankment Repair Project. I don't know, I'm not saying that we're on a hayride and we're not going nowhere. I don't know. But this speaks to the Munson Slough area, and it is with specific criteria of what this money can be used to program eligibility. In eligible activities, the state will not consider funding requests for the following. Includes construction new facilities, equipment such as emergency pumps, communication devices, vehicles, tree removal, debris removal, and other forms of maintenance. And, you know, words like that are, you ponder the value for things that you can't use this money for, which in terms of the flooding issues that a couple of citizens spoke to us about earlier, relative to the science, which we don't want to hear from the citizens in Munson area. And I received some documents that were sent to all of us that came from citizens from down there, sent to county administrator, to Mr. Ken Morris. And these citizens have been trying to meet with us about the Munson area. And I know that District Two Commissioner and I are so close in the Munson area and have overlap, and perhaps we disagree with our hearing from those citizens, but I really understand the value, and I trust that this matter is going to go forward. But I want to vote against this today, and it is because that we have excluded the voices of our citizens to be a part of the thinking, the thinking, the imagining, conceptualization of what this Munson Slough is. We got people who are willing, ready, and able to come to this table, come in this room, and meet with us, and we have refused that. I think that we're not little children. We're not little kids, and it seems very arrogant on the state of Florida and the county of Leon to gather themselves and exclusively have a conversation and put money forth in Munson Slough, and we exclude out Commissioner Caban to, after a year of studies and whatnot, that's crazy. Right now, with what we've seen with all them trees down there, I imagine the whole topography done flipped, done changed, and it's going to get worse. And I can't see why people who live there, three generations, two generations, scientists and all, can't talk to us. So I think that this exclusivity between state and county, to the exclusion of the residents of that area, that rattles me, and I want to be on the record to say that these people's voices should be included. And now, with a good segment of trees that ain't got no tops to them down there, there's a lot going to change, and potentially, you could say that the flooding is going to increase. But even this grant denies our use of tree removal, debris removal, and I don't, I don't understand it. So those things being said, Madam Chair, I wanted to, you know, let the train roll on. I'm going to step off on this one, on this ride. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Caban.
Madam Chair, I move option one.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
I believe it's one day, five ayes, with Commissioner Maddox out of chamber. Thank you so much. Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this item is a bid award for yard-to-be-processing services, and again, very happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this is just simply to say that as we submit this special submission to, yes, Department of Transportation, Safe Street and Roads, all of that, I've said it over and over, and I need to give it one more over today. So to give it another over, US 319 South Crawfville Road, we need special attention. And just like we've singled this street out, and for it to have special to-do and prepped up and got on a pretty dress, we need a project, we need to go after the emergency evacuation route, Crawfville Road. We need to finish the lineage from 363 roadway down to the county line. This storm, the previous one, those anticipated, we're doing, not only our county, we're doing neighboring counties a disservice that when they get to Leon Road Passage, it bottlenecks into that single lane. On top of that, the commitment that had been made years ago, that Wenwall Color came up to Leon County's line, we would meet them there, and I don't see the steps. I'm asking our next chairman of this board of commissioners, I want to serve on the CRPTA. I don't know what our members on the CRPTA, what y'all doing, but the emergency evacuation route needs to be completed, and I need y'all to... route needs to be completed, and I need y'all to make that very, very apparent, and it's not getting done. There's no movement. And this item right here represents, Commissioners, the kind and quality of attention and lifting up the kind of model with which we need to go to any, every lottie, dottie, every doggone body who can bring Crawfville Road some pavement and a wide street that's safer and something that's an emergency evacuation route for citizens of the coastal areas, more importantly for our citizens. We is getting whipped down, we's getting beat up, and Crawfville area, Walcolor, is outgrowing Leon County, the affordable housing, the quality of housing is killing us, and we're losing the battle. We're losing the economic. O'Keefe, I appreciate your sharing that we is the fastest, whatever we are in our growth economy, but I tell you, if we ain't, if we number one, Walcolor is probably close, close number two, because we losing housing, neighborhoods, and everything on negligence. We won't do the infrastructure. We need it, and I want to lift this issue, saying that this is the model, this is the attention I want on Crawfville Road. I move this item for adoption.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Ms. County Administrator, do you want to add anything to item number 10?
Just a quick cleanup on my behalf, my fault, I mistakenly skipped number 10 and went to number 11, but I think Commissioner Proctor put us right back in the right posture. Obviously, we're on 10, and that's what the motion speaks to.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? Can I just ask a question, Ms. County Administrator, on a couple of these items where we requested approval for grant applications? And I believe it was this one where it indicated it, through analysis with staff, that it was determined that Tram Road was the best roadway to seek this application. So, when we're looking at federal grants, but even state grants, there's certain criteria that has to be met, and then we determine what area in the county is best suited, and I guess the most likely to be granted, to receive the grant. Am I correct?
That's correct. Again, a lot of these grants are, they're set at different amounts, they have different criteria, it's just a matchmaking process that we have. Some grants, we have multiple submissions for, and in this case, I think when Commissioner Proctor again talks about 319, obviously, I think that's reflected in the CRTPA's overall priority list, where there's oftentimes a greater level of funding involved for a bigger project and that sort of thing. But this just puts us in the best position, the most competitive position, based on this specific grant criteria.
And then some roads, the state roads, county roads, what have you. So, that makes a difference as well.
It does.
Okay, thank you. If no other comments, all those in favor of consent, agenda item number 10, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Thank you so much. Ms. County Administrator, number 11.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, we're on the yard debris processing services item. Again, Commissioners, we're seeking your authorization to approve this bid that's before you today. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'm like, Commissioner Proctor, I'm sorry, you pulled it.
Commissioners, truly, in a moment like this, who among us would oppose yard debris and removal of limbs and all of that? Certainly, I support that. Typically, when this issue comes up, I ask, is there any minority participation? And I was looking for the paperwork to see what kind of minority involvement. And I've always said that it got to the point that black folk can't get a contract picking sticks and limbs up, and we've come to a bad economic position. Though I know we're the best economy in the United States, it's just that black folk cannot posture in that ascension. And it's apparent to me that in yard debris, cleaning up sticks, you know, I need a, I think you need all of that. So, what is it that we can do, Vince, that we can get some diversity picking up sticks and debris and leaves and stuff that people have done for many years, rake the yard and pick up stuff? I mean, God, black folk have not lost that skill. What do we have to do to formalize it, to lift and afford that money to circulate? Because this is very good money for picking up sticks.
Ms. County Administrator?
Madam Chair, thank you. Certainly, I think when you talk about yard debris and yard debris collection and a lot of what we're doing related to the storm, certainly, you're right, Commissioner Proctor, lots of opportunities there that we fully engage in. This, in particular, has to do with just yard debris processing, and it's probably, it's one of those items that is so specific that, and we have an existing contractor who basically said that they couldn't even make enough money to continue doing it, so we entered into this new agreement, and again, that's the agreement that's before you now. But again, it's very specific, it's so much so that it's probably a self-performing type of a contract, where there's limited opportunities to split a contract up that's of this size. But let me ask Maggie to come up and fill in any holes. She's been, she's very, very close to this operation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Vince, you nailed it, that the sticks have already been picked up by the time they get to this contract. This is our solid waste management facility, and we handle 15,000 tons of yard debris a year. To the point being made, very specialized equipment. This is a tub grinder, actually about the size of the room we're standing in right now. It's never even been financially feasible that the county purchase one. The vendor utilizes this tub grinder across the community or responding to other storms and things like that, and we get it on our site monthly or every six weeks.
Thank you very much. We, when we're deploying, and I know this issue does not, but I, this week, I can't help but think about, when we deploy, tree pickup, cut down, pull them off the limbs, get them off the houses, get them out of the streets. Methodology for what's first, what's second, what's next, what's next, that kind of thing. And later tonight, I'd like to mention probably an item that's coming up, general business. And it's amazing, so much, I know, Vince, you guys were getting ready for the June 1 kickoff for hurricane season, so we getting the debris guys together to pick up. All of this is related to storm stuff, and I just don't see minority participation in something which ought to be accessible. So, I move the item of options one and two.
Thank you. Is there a second? Any other discussion? Commissioner Maddox?
As I realize, as I understand it, especially in the minority piece of it, a lot of it comes with the lack of qualifications for those minority firms, or minority businesses that actually could do this type of work. And I don't think it's by any fault of our minority offices that it's happening this way, but, you know, those firms that, when they see these opportunities and wondering how they can get access to them, need to understand what the qualifications are in order for them to be the minority on these contracts. And so, as I'm looking at it, Commissioner Proctor, you know, it's not just this, there's other opportunities that we've had where we had no minority on the contract. And I know the Office of Economic Vitality and Darryl Jones and the minority office do a good job of trying to educate our folks on how exactly you get prepared and the qualifications that need to be placed and that kind of thing. We have to do, we have to make sure that those businesses are motivated, understand how big the opportunity is, and exactly how much money that they are missing out on when it comes to contracts that are, that quite frankly could cycle back into the communities of these companies, of the employees that look like us, that work for these companies. And so, the more we can do to motivate our businesses to follow up with our MWBE department to figure out, especially when it comes to the services that we contract for, what is it that I need to do to get qualified, to be able to be a minority on these contracts? And if we have barriers that are too high for them to reach, well, then how can we adjust those barriers? I mean, some of it could be, I've heard throughout the years, the bonding capacity and other things that have gotten in the way of minority businesses being able to qualify. What can we do to help out? Because I do agree with you, every time I see a contract come across and there's not a qualified minority business to do it, I think we missed the opportunity. But I say it publicly that our minority businesses, if you're motivated to do it, and you want to know what exactly you need to do, there's an office in our MWE department that will walk you through, usher you through, what exactly it takes for you to get, to be subs on these contracts, and what kind of qualifications that you may lack and how you can get there. And so, Commissioner Proctor, I'm right there with you, and I'm hoping that in the future, those businesses that can qualify for these types of contracts will take advantage. Thank you.
May I ask, Madam Chair?
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox.
May I ask, County Administrator, this company is in the unincorporated area exclusively?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Does this company operating exclusively for unincorporated residents?
No, it operates, it takes all of our, it processes all of our land, all of our debris that we receive from the city of Tallahassee, that we receive from private haulers, the whole, the whole, the whole of your bank, the whole shooting match.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Let me ask you a question, Ms. County Administrator, or maybe the employee that came up.
Maggie, Maggie Terry.
Yeah. That's over the whole operation.
Sure, yeah, Maggie.
And I see where the aspirational goals weren't even recommended, you said, because of limited opportunities to even sub-contract. And when I read that, I assumed we're looking at a company that owns big equipment, not just for one job, but for continuous, and then a company that has the ability to grind and mulch, because I read with 10% of the mulch is allowed for citizens to utilize in their own yards. So, we're looking at a company, I'm thinking that owns all of this equipment consistently.
You're exactly right. There's no subcontracting with the nature of this work. The vendor owns and operates the equipment that grinds the mulch, the equipment that loads the mulch, and that hauls that yard debris away to our boilers.
Have we thought about bifurcating the process and to maybe one segment, the hauling and the removal, and the other segment, the grinding and the mulching and the removal? Have we looked at it? And would it still provide limited ability for subcontracting or limited ability for minority women contractors to perform any of those services?
You raise a valid point. Historically, this has been one service all lumped together, but certainly, that could be examined if that were the direction of the board.
We've always submitted the request for proposals as one big contract.
Correct.
Okay, so we've never looked at bifurcating it?
No.
And it might not be profitable to do it that way. I was just wondering if we had ever considered that, so that we could be maybe more inclusive in spreading the word. But, you know, I certainly understand the recommendation, I understand rebidding it, I understand, apparently, it's not that many, even majority contractors that do this work in the area. But just wanted to see if you all had thought about it that way. I had even submitted a proposal where the work is bifurcated.
That is certainly something that could be done.
Any other comments, Commissioners, Commissioner Proctor?
Just support what you're saying. I just think that our numbers on minority spending need to improve. I say that across the board, not just in what I've said, picking up sticks. I mean, I know it's a little more complicated than picking up sticks, but it's debris, we all can get involved. I mean, we all have, you know, in our own personal spaces, gotten involved. But I think that across the board, the county, we got to go stronger, we got to innovate, we got to continue to aggravate, that we don't stagnate with respect to falling into a status quo that does not, as President Kennedy said, a rising tide lifts all boats. We need the tide to rise, and it needs to rise wide enough that all boats do rise with that tide. So, a push, an urging, a bifurcation or a trifurcation of our contracting, let's redouble our efforts, and I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor?
I think I'd make a motion, I believe.
You did. This has been second, I believe. All those in favor of consent item number 11, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? I vote aye. Hearing none. It's approved. Thank you, Commissioners. Ms. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The final item pulled from consent is seek your acceptance of a status report on the Comprehensive Land Use Policy 2.1.9 Family Air Subdivision Status Report. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. County Administrator. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you. Commissioners, as y'all know, this 2.1.9 is a means, a methodology for families to devise property, to divide it among its family members, and to create parcels out of larger tracts. And it, we retain this capacity and walk with me, Mr. Administrator, after the adoption of the comprehensive plan in '90 or '91. I think that a lot of families, and I want to thank staff for a couple of weeks ago, sitting with a family who had 2.1.9 questions, Commissioner O'Keefe, out in your district, a tract which they were trying to understand how to, the 2.1.9 would work in the challenge of, I forget what the zoning was, but the zoning said you could get one, they thought they had inherited property, they could get 25 units on, one house per acre. It ends up that if they divided it 25 ways, they would have that opportunity, Barry. Staff did a great job of sitting down with the family to walk them through available tools. Yet, the zoning, I think, was one house per, was one house for three acres, and the value of the property at one house per three acres is certainly nowhere close to 25 different parcels, one house per acre. And I believe that my ask today, Barry, is how do we communicate to families whose clarity what this 2.1.9 affords them, what they can do with their property? And it's just that we got a lot of families that's land-rich and money-poor, and if they could parcel out this land and in the face, in particular, if you got rural, you know, one house per 10 acres, but that 2.1.9 gets them to where they want to go. And I believe that we need to communicate that heart and convey that message, in particular with when a family feels there's nothing we can do with our 37 acres. We can get three houses out of 37 acres. Well, if you got 37 acres and you got rural designation, that's about what you can get, three houses off of 37 acres. But this 2.1.9 will give families... But this 2.1.9 will give families more bites on this property of 37 acres and can do a lot more things creatively. And I think that whereas we have, some families have surrendered and have just gotten beat down, and they paying the taxes, thinking that from grandmama and granddaddy, that we could do this and this, and now we have so much tight zoning on everything in Leon County. But we need to communicate the 2.1.9 exception for families. And I'm asking the board for your consideration, your thoughts and reflections, what can we do other than approve this tonight? I would like to suggest, Madam Chair, that we do six, eight-month, one-year promotion, communications program. We got that thing we do in the newspaper on Sundays. We need to put in a full eight-year, I'm sorry, eight-month effort to inform, teach this community that in the face of all these suffocating zoning restrictions, that 2.1.9 can free and liberate them from the crushing zoning practices that we have applied to certain areas. That's why I pull this, because this needs to be communicated. This right here is liberation news, if you will. And I think I would like to see Commissioners us go after a campaign, public relations campaign, to convey and let folk sitting on big tracts of land, in particular, know what they can do with their property. So I move the adoption of this item, Madam Chair, with a recommendation that the county can convey a six-month program to target and to lift before the public the 2.1.9 policy of land ownership, which allows families to devise their property.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Is there a second? Okay, Commissioner Maddox. It's been second, by Commissioner Maddox. Can I ask the County Administrator, has the county engaged in any type information to heirs in the past?
Yes.
Would you explain it to us?
Sure, and to the community at large. However, we're very receptive to what Commissioner Proctor says here in the motion. It's entirely consistent with what we've been doing, and we'll just take that and redouble our efforts with that kind of focus. So very happy to do that.
Thank you. So it's not new, we have engaged with it in the past.
Madam Chair, you know personally that in probate, and you close out people's estates, that families get to the end of the line and think, there's nothing else we can do. So they toss the property and sell it. They can't pay the taxes, they can't keep, you know? And I think that Clerk Marshall, who has different trainings for the public, she has training for probate, she has training for divorce, she has training for how to use juvenile court, they meet the public. I think that there needs to be a public, the clerk's office understanding of 2.1.9 to say to families, to attorneys, this 2.1.9 needs to be celebrated, lifted, and made a part, potentially of the clerk's effort to promulgate rules and options for the public to better enhance their transition of the loss of life and the passing of the baton to successive generations. That's what I think.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. And I believe, Mr. County Administrator, this is not new to your office.
No.
Okay, thank you. So we've got the amendment to agenda item number 13, and your friendly discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. County Administrator, we are on general business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, item number 15, before I introduce this item, Commissioners, let me say that staff was originally planning to present on the once-in-a-200-year weather event. Then on Friday, we experienced a weather phenomenon that we have really, which was unseen in the documented history of Leon County and something that won't soon be forgotten. So in short, while we will certainly cover the historic flooding caused by the bicentennial storm, the extensive and necessary road repairs that were performed, and the rapid response to that, and a whole lot more. With that, I did want to start with an overview of the May 10 tornadoes and our extensive response and recovery efforts, all of which are still ongoing and developing even as we speak. In a few minutes, I'm going to ask Matt Cavell and Kevin Peters to share more about the county's response and recovery efforts. Commissioners, while Leon County and our many partners are still in the very early stages of the recovery, it's no understatement to say that we continue to execute our most extensive and critical coordination and preparation effort to date. And all of these efforts were informed by the county's all-too-much experience recently in responding to storms, including Hermine and Irma and Michael and the bicentennial storm. And the emphasis that we at Leon County put on putting all the lessons learned in place to be even more resilient for, as this commission knows very well, the next thing in our response and our preparedness efforts. So to hit just a few of the highlights, Commissioners, in our response and recovery efforts to the May 10 convergence of three tornadoes, we've conducted the following critical operations, and I'm just going to tick through a couple of these. Again, I'm going to ask Matt and Kevin to provide a little bit more detail and, again, just publicly bring the board up to speed. And Commissioners, I know that you've received a lot of email updates from me, but as Matt Cavell always reminds me, in events like this, no one gets communicated with too much. And so Commissioners, if you'll allow me, just to hit the highlights, we've removed more than 1,500 trees from roads and right-ofways and county property. We've cleared more than 130 county roads in less than 24 hours. We led the community's damage assessment teams, a crucial step in seeking federal aid and deployment of human resources. These assessments revealed nearly 100 destroyed homes and 500 majorly damaged ones, far more than Michael, which made landfall as a category four hurricane. Following the tornadoes in coordination with the Red Cross, we ensured ample shelter capacity to the community. We conducted our most aggressive public information and disaster readiness campaign with up-to-the-minute updates on every platform with messages seen, read, or heard nearly 5 million times. We coordinated, Commissioners, the community's largest mass care effort by opening and overseeing and helping staff three points of distribution in the hardest-hit areas. I'm going to come back to that in just one minute. But to date, the county has, with the great help of the state, and again, I'm going to come back to that in just a minute, distributed more than 170 bottles of water, 40,000 shelf-stable meals, and nearly 1,000 tarps, and we know that that number is growing. We coordinated welfare checks and direct assistance to independent living facilities alongside the American Red Cross, the Florida Department of Health, Leon County EMS, and the Tallahassee Fire Department. We issued three wireless emergency alerts to reach the hardest-hit areas, again, geographically defined, making them aware of all of the relief through Big Ben 211, and so much more. Like I said, we're going to drill a little deeper on this with Matt and Kevin. But Commissioners, we're still early on in the process, but I want to recognize our nearly 1,000 employees who've been working alongside about 100 partner agencies and nonprofits to help us recover. And again, we're just getting started. This is going to take some time. Some of our efforts, you're already seeing that the community is looking much differently than it did just a couple of days ago, so a lot of important work being done. Commissioners, before I hand it off to Matt and Kevin, let me just say this. While I thanked the, all the county crews that have been working, I can't put enough emphasis on that. This has been one heck of an effort that's been ongoing over the past several days around the clock. I also want to thank the Commission sincerely. I want to thank the board. Madam Chair, you've been available to us throughout. Our district Commissioners, you've been very active and helpful. Commissioners, I've received all the photographs, I've received all the pictures of the damage. Our district Commissioners in the areas that were particularly hard-hit, Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Caban, really, your efforts have been nothing but helpful to us, and we greatly appreciate it. Commissioner Caban, I have to just put a special emphasis on this. I don't know what you did, and I'm not asking any questions about it, but on the points of distribution with the state, sincerely, I can't thank you enough for whatever you did. If all of your important business, you know, ventures don't work out, you always have a job in Leon County EMS, and emergency management, rather, it's, but I joke, but sincerely, I can't tell you how much we appreciate it and how important that has been to our overall response. And again, I mean that. With that, Matt, why don't I have you come up a little bit? I know Kevin's going to follow you, and we're going to go into some level of detail on this, Commissioners, because I know it's important. I'm going to come back after Matt and talk a little bit about the finances that are involved, what we're prepared for, and what we expect to happen over the longer term. But Matt, you can take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Chair, Commissioners, to say that 2024 is a historic year is something we went in knowing very much, but we didn't know in what ways it would be historic. We didn't know that what a storm would be for 10 minutes might take months to rebuild from. What I would like to do is take the time to take one step back, just one month, believe it or not, nearly just one month, to the bicentennial flood, to talk a little bit about that. And why there's a link between those two things is every disaster makes us more prepared and ready for the next. In the bicentennial storm, as the Administrator had indicated, we experienced one of our most significant flooding events in history, of which dumped incredible amount of water in an incredibly short period of time. Emergency management was watching it the day before, but the results of the rain were unprecedented and unforecasted. When we were responding to that storm, Public Works did a Herculean effort, as the Administrator has indicated, repairing 11 roads so that they may be traversable by emergency vehicles. That required the deployment countywide of 240 barricades. It also required the transport of 79 truckloads of material to repair washed-out roads. Now, what does all that translate to? 3 million pounds of gravel deployed to repair roads in the community so that emergency vehicles could access people who need service, all of which that happened in a matter of hours to repair all of those roads over that course of time, to barricade the spaces and to make the area traversable. As the county Administrator has said, also, the flood required some deployment of our wireless emergency alert system to notify folks in some of the most flooded areas about the potential dangers and considerations that they would have to have to shelter in place. The bicentennial flood, again, tested us in many different ways. Long-term water events are a challenge. You had to really look around to only witness that. Imagine if you could not access your home for days at a time. That turns us to, though, the unprecedented historic, whatever adjective you want to apply to what we experienced with the tornadoes. What I'd like to do, I could tell you numbers, I could get into all that with you. What I want to do is to demonstrate for you a very brief, and be with me, 90-second fly-through of some of the most hardest-hit areas, and I'm going to just describe a little bit of the path of the storm from the National Weather Service. So again, at 6:50 a.m. on Friday, May 10, National Weather Service confirmed that Tallahassee, later confirmed that Tallahassee was struck by three tornadoes. Two tornadoes, both rated EF2 with winds up to 115 miles per hour, converged at the Capital City Country Club in Tallahassee after wreaking havoc across the city's urban core. This rare convergence of those systems amplified the destruction caused, leaving a wide swath of damage, including snap trees, demolished structures along their paths, and you need only look at this video to try to understand some of the breadth of it. Meanwhile, at the same time, a third tornado rated an EF1 with winds up to 110 miles per hour traveled over 31 miles across the south side of Leon County, impacting Woodville and the Lake Talquin areas. That tornado primarily caused tree damage, but however significantly disrupted the community, affecting roads, homes, infrastructure of all sorts. That outbreak of three tornadoes from one storm is a completely unprecedented event that we have not had the experience to respond to. But however, every emergency that we have had has prepared us for the response that you saw from county emergency management and that you're seeing across the community now to respond to this type of dramatic disaster at every stage. I want to jump into these numbers, but I want to say one quick thing. Kevin and I have been to a lot of states. We've done a lot of emergencies. We've done more than 40 years' worth of emergency management experience between the two of us. I know he doesn't look it, and I do. Out of all of that work, we've not seen anything like this. I've been to Superstorm Sandy, we've done some Katrina-side work, I've done all this other work. Nothing has ever led to this most recent shot of you, of an assessment that we lead at the county to find those damaged structures. Why is that important? I'll get into it a little bit later, but in general, finding these damaged structures is one of the most important keys to, at first, in the response, deploying human services to those areas. The hardest-hit areas receive American Red Cross Salvation Army assistance. It also determines in coordination with the state of Florida where those points of distribution are deployed. They are deployed near and close to where the damage is. This damage history that you see in front of us, that 114 number, the most recent number, is more than four times the destroyed structures we had with Michael. The major destruction is significantly higher than what we had in Michael. What you see on that top side on this screenshot is a heat map showing you where those damaged structures are, primarily, again, through urban core, but traversing from west to east, and then across the south side of the map. The bottom portion tells you where the assessments are, affected, minors, majors, and destroyed. What all of that means is to communicate that to federal government for assistance, and I'll get to that in one second. I want to take a step to talk a little bit about immediately post-storm actions. 6:50 a.m., we have those tornadoes. We were sitting in the EOC prior to that work. So prior to that landing of those tornadoes, we were there watching a system, a cell enhanced monitoring. 40 minutes later, the emergency operations center is fully activated as the core for coordinating all of our efforts. Up to this point, we are 104 hours activated. Kevin and I have split four hours of sleep between the two of us, and there's a declared local state of emergency that was coordinated with the Chair and the Administrator. Our Public Works actions, again, the Administrator had said, more than 1,500 trees removed, more than 100 county roads cleared in less than 24 hours. I think if you talked to Public Works and you said those weren't entangled with electrical lines, they would have had them cleared in four hours. They were on it, being deployed all across the community in preparation for an event, but not an event to this magnitude, but we prepare for the worst and hope for the best. It's going to lead us to debris collection. All of those sticks that ended up on the ground and inside people's houses now need to go to the curb. It's a very simple message, all of which is on our county emergency information portal, and I hate to say it, but our community is intimately familiar with this process. We have just activated debris collection for Adalia in September of last year, and we've done it for almost every major hurricane prior to that. Any tree that is on private property will go to the curb and it will be picked up at no cost. That first pass, community-wide, begins this Friday, May 17. Now, does that mean all debris is going to be picked up on May? Absolutely not. We're going to begin the process of systematically removing the debris from some of the hardest-hit areas to allow for safety and access and traversability. So that means removing things from the right-of-way. All the roads are clear, but we need to begin moving that content. We anticipate thousands and thousands of cubic yards of debris to be removed from this community. The initial windshield assessment could put it near the scale of Michael, perhaps. Our continued analysis of those areas, because it's so specific, is ongoing. Our continued analysis of those areas, because it's so specific, is ongoing. The points of distribution, as the administrator had touched on, is one of the largest and most effective mass care operations that we are coordinating with the state of Florida at three different locations. Those locations are water, they are MREs, and they are TARPs. We instituted a request from the state, and the state did an amazing job to complement those points of distribution on Sunday with TARPs in advance of the weather that we experienced yesterday and today. That is absolutely critical to save property and to make sure that people remain safe in homes that are majorly affected that they decided to continue to reside in. These points of distribution are coordinated closely with county facility staff, who staff and coordinate and oversee them from traffic issues to more cones to more anything. Our county teams are responsible for finding the sites, planning the sites, and doing the distribution that you see in coordination with the state. Also, why not throw in a sandbag operation into the mix of responding to a disaster like this? With flash flood watch risks, we deployed sandbag operation sites at five different locations to distribute more than 10,000 sandbags. In addition to that, I want to talk briefly about communication. The administrator had touched on the wireless emergency alert, which is very much that thing that you receive on your phones that's similar to Amber Alerts. We have the ability to deploy those with the federal government via a warning system process. That's one of the most effective ways to reach a geographic area that needs information. That information that everyone, and I'll hit this again later, everyone needs to understand is that 211 Big Bend is the social services connecting agency for folks with needs. It is the most effective process. So therefore, as a partner of 211 Big Bend, we decided we'd send a wireless emergency alert with their coordination, communicating to thousands of people for hours at a time that they have the ability to call 211 for case management for anything that they would need. And this can be referrals to shelter processes that are still ongoing thanks to the American Red Cross, and these can be food and pantry replacements and any number of things. Our communications efforts have reached tens of millions of folks across the nation because the story was big, but that doesn't matter nearly as much to us here locally as reaching the people in our community, of which we've done in every conventional way possible. We've done it through radio advertisements and direct social media pushes and alerts on the phone and all those other efforts. And let me be very clear, we are just getting started in communications. As Vince has said, no one has ever been communicated with too much when they had a tree through their house. Everything that we communicate to them is absolutely critical, and it is vetted, and it is accurate, and it is serviceable when they click it, source it, call us. The next component that I want to touch on is business assistance. This is large. It has a few components to it, but as we had heard, our award-winning Office of Economic Vitality is connected in the emergency operations center. No mistake, there are emergency support function 18, they have a seat there with us next to American Red Cross, next to any other mass care representative, next to Kevin Peters, because business assistance is critical to returning a community to normal. There are many different levers, a good number of which are at the state, which we've talked about, from small business damage assessment surveys, which we get out into the community to understand the impact, again, to tell a story to federal government and federal sources. In addition to that, they have an emergency bridge loan, the state has launched an emergency bridge loan to make sure that businesses keep their doors open and that they do not close during this period of recovery. All of this information is on the emergency information portal, but all of it is also available at 211 Big Bend. One of the significant elements that I want to bring up right now, too, is the county will be waiving building permit fees during the period of rebuilding and reconstruction. That is a significant investment in our community, taking the strain of having to pay for the building permit on the rebuilding process. That could be north of hundreds of thousands of dollars of relief provided to our community through that action, and that is a significant next step as our community recovers. Now, I want to drill into recovering, again, and can't stress enough, 211 Big Bend. There will be so many different resources that come online at the state, at the federal level, at hopefully local government and donations brought together that 211 Big Bend is that location to get all of that information. Let me be clear, too. If you are one of those families that has a tree through your roof, you probably have more interest in social services than just removing the tree. You probably lost what was in your refrigerator. You may have additional property damage. You may need conversations about how to get through insurance and figure that part out. You may even need to seek shelter again through the American Red Cross process at the Al Lawson Center. All of those things are possible to be talked through and coordinated with at 211 Big Bend. And again, this is more of a hot off the presses, we'll get you that information. The state has also said that SNAP replenishment will be available as well. So again, that information, more details to that will be available not only at 211 Big Bend, but on the county's emergency information portal. And then lastly, before I pass it off to Kevin Peters, probably for more bad news, is I want to give a brief talk about what, having seen this movie many times, about how disasters unfold, I want to talk about the people and what they will need during this time. We talked about, again, private property tree removal. There's something down in my backyard, front yard, through my home, wherever. There is a process through 211 Big Bend that they can reach out to through four different faith-based and private partners that will assist them in removing trees and broadly Samaritan's Purse. Again, this information has been provided by the administrator to the board, but is all available by connecting with 211 Big Bend. You'll see folks with food spoiled, they'll need to contact America's Second Harvest, but they can also do that through contacting 211 Big Bend. Then there will be needs for shelter, there will be needs for business assistance, 211 Big Bend. In addition, I want to talk very briefly about the types of folks who also need assistance, our vulnerable populations, some of our most important to us and some of the most core in our emergency planning, seniors, for instance. Seniors at the county level, as you may or may not know, that we have the responsibility of working with the state of Florida to ensure that 59 healthcare facilities in our community have the best appropriate plans as required by ACHA to be able to exist without power for a period of time. They need to have a comfort-cooled area, a common space for folks. They need to have plans for evacuation and service and how medical assistance is provided. We do this with nursing homes, assisted living facilities, and other classifications. Again, a roll-up of mere 60 facilities that we work with on a regular basis. I bring this up because there are some facilities, such as you may have seen a headline recently from Brookstone, there are some facilities that we at the county have flagged very specifically with the state of Florida to bring them into what we presume would be compliance with ACHA's rules and regulations for an assisted living or other facility. That would allow us to maintain that communication with that facility. And let me talk also about power very quickly. It would put that facility on a power, a priority restoration circuit, and most importantly, that property manager of that facility would have a direct line of connection to City of Tallahassee Utilities for restoration process. So I want to talk about those vulnerable populations that need that assistance. We again communicate in any disaster with them, but again, any unmet needs right now from that vulnerable population or others, 211 Big Bend is one of the best first steps to get those wrapped around social services. And I think I did a disservice and I didn't say what 211 Big Bend's number is if 211 doesn't work, but it quite simply is 211. The number there is area code 850-617-6333. Before turning it over to Kevin, I want to touch on real quickly, we have all that assistance I just talked about, all those people who will need it. It pales in comparison to what the federal government can bring into the community with individual assistance. We again can meet the direct human services needs of our people now in an imminent emergency, but the intermediate and long-term recovery is necessary to receive federal assistance. We again seek that, and we will begin that process tomorrow with federal folks who are going to be in the field with us, doing drive-arounds to assess the damage, to be able to hear what not only we are hearing in the field, but to see what we are seeing in our community. So again, that is the biggest lever that we can pull for long-term assistance for our community. If that was to happen, what that means is disaster recovery centers open, then they can meet with the federal government and get a whole wealth of monies to make up for being uninsured or underinsured on their property. Again, one of the most significant efforts that can happen. In addition to that is the public assistance monies, which mean that we could avail ourselves of compensation from FEMA to receive up to 87.5% of our expenses back again at the local government level. That is huge. Debris cost collection for Michael was north of $20 million. That is a very, very significant purse string to pull on, and we are doing everything in our power to get that for our people first and close second, us. So with that, I want to turn it over to Kevin to just touch on a couple more points. He's going to share all the good news about the upcoming hurricane season, and then we'll be available for any questions, but we'll turn it back over to the administrator at that.
All right. Good afternoon again, Commissioners. Yeah, Matt drove home a lot of the local efforts, and so I'm going to talk more about the coordination between the local, the state, and the state to the federal. Again, we work with the state emergency management team all year long, not just during disasters. All emergencies and disasters are local, and the state recognizes that. It's their number-one planning assumption within their emergency management plan for the state level. They refer to themselves during emergency time as the CERT, the State Emergency Response Team, and that's the combination of the Division of Emergency Management and the state agencies that fulfill the emergency support functions, which make up that state emergency response team. So the CERT team itself, they will staff the state emergency operations center to provide that support to local governments during emergencies as appropriate. Working with the CERT local governments through their county emergency operations centers, they make requests for assistance. We talked about the agenda item earlier, the statewide mutual aid agreement and the Web BOC subscription. It's through those mechanisms and those electronic tools where the needs that our local responders, which we saw the pictures of, if we need the needs, we can make those mission requests through the Web BOC process, and we can either leverage assistance from CERT team partners, which are the state agencies, or through the statewide mutual aid agreement, which is other signatories, may it be counties, cities, towns, special districts. And again, the Web BOC software is that management tool where all the information, the resources are documented, the deployments are documented, and the overall process has a paper, electronic paper trail from request to deployment to closeout, which all falls into the reimbursement process. This process has served us well over the past disasters. We've received mutual aid and assistance from the state in our past hurricanes and other emergencies. We've also been able to send resources to other communities to help during disasters. Additionally, the CERT team will send liaisons to county emergency operations centers during disasters. Oftentimes, there will be one CERT liaison for a couple of counties, so they'll kind of bounce around to the counties through the course of the day, but they come on-site to provide some additional information sharing and coordination in a face-to-face manner. And it's, you know, we're lucky here in Tallahassee, we're very close to the state emergency operations center, but when you're in central or south Florida and you're much further away from the state headquarters, that CERT liaison being in the emergency operations center is very valuable for that face-to-face coordination. One of the other roles that the CERT team plays is they are our conduit to the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA. All disasters being local, you know, we're going to be the lead for conducting these impact and damage assessments, collecting the costs to respond, as well as the cost of the repair, the damages to our government infrastructure. Through the CERT team, we'll request, what we'll submit, the damage reports, they'll be aggregated statewide, and the CERT will request what's called a joint preliminary damage assessment. Matt mentioned that just a minute ago. That is where FEMA teams will come in with state team members, and we will do two things. We're going to take them, to show them the highlights of the damage areas so they can assess and verify what we are reporting. Additionally, they will meet with our finance people and our other Public Works and facilities management utility providers to review the impact data and the cost data from the government side of the response. Once the preliminary damage assessments are complete, the data will be sent back to the CERT team, they'll work with the governor's office to prepare a request for a federal disaster declaration. That request will go to our regional FEMA office, which is in Atlanta for our southern region, where it will be reviewed, and the FEMA regional administrator will make a recommendation. They will forward that to FEMA headquarters in Washington, D.C., where FEMA Administrator Criswell will review that, and it would go from there for a recommendation for a presidential declaration to the White House, where the president would have to make that declaration. If we receive the declaration, there are two programs that could be turned on. One would be the individual assistance program, which provides aid to the citizens. The other program is the public assistance program, which will provide aid to our local governmental entities, which is that reimbursement process that Matt mentioned. A little bit about the individual assistance program. It is based on the impacts of the disaster. FEMA will look at what has happened and they'll determine which aspects of that get turned on. It does provide the assistance to meet survivor needs that are either uninsured or underinsured. It is a FEMA-managed program. So what is our role in that? We have three major roles. One, we provide the space, the location for disaster recovery center. Historically, in previous disasters, we've been able to host that in a very central location to our community. That's at the main library downtown. It's convenient as a central hub in Tallahassee and Leon County. Second, we will help guide what FEMA provides, they call them disaster survivor assistance teams. They would be teams of individuals that can go door-to-door, meet citizens face-to-face, and register them where they are. They come with their own mobile devices to do the registration process wherever they encounter citizens. And then the third, and the most thing that Matt talked about is the communications piece, it would be our, we would help advertise the availability of FEMA assistance and make sure our community knows how to register, whether that's at the disaster recovery center, whether that's if the disaster assistance teams come and meet them right at their front door with a knock, or we'd also share that 1-800 number for FEMA and their website registration portal. On the public assistance process, that's, again, that's the process that provides reimbursement of eligible local government costs related to damaged infrastructure or emergency response costs. The work must be the legal responsibility of the applicant, you know. So as an example, Leon County Government, we don't run the electric utility, so we could not be eligible for reimbursement for electric. That would be City of Tallahassee because they have that legal responsibility. The cost must be reasonable and related to the emergency work or the infrastructure damage associated with the declared disaster. Our role in that process would be, you know, we're going to identify the eligible costs, we're going to develop our project plans for the different damaged infrastructure or the costs expended. We provide the cost estimates, we'll do the work and document the work, and then submit it all as a final package to FEMA to get the obligation of reimbursement. Associate that, FEMA will assign a program delivery manager to Leon County if we get declared, that will work with the county throughout the lifecycle of the public assistance declaration. And so again, we've had experience with this process. We've had the multiple hurricanes, the pandemic. It is a process that fortunately and unfortunately, unfortunately, you don't, never want to have to do it, but the fortunate byproduct is that we have a lot of experience with it. And so we, you know, we know what to expect, we know how to interface, and we're very hopeful that the work that we've done to lead up to tomorrow when we have the damage assessments, the joint preliminary damage assessment teams in the field, we are very hopeful that that can get us pushed to that federal declaration. So on that, before I turn it back over to the county administrator, the harbinger of bad news, hurricane season is, I think, 15 days away. We are almost there, and the hurricane outlook is exceptional this year. Colorado State University, they do hurricane season forecasting, they are the, they've pioneered the technique for long-range hurricane forecasting. They are calling for an extremely active hurricane season. We are moving into a La Nina weather pattern, which will be very favorable for hurricane development in the Atlantic. We've had a record warm sea surface temperatures in the eastern and central Atlantic since last hurricane season, so all through the winter months and through the spring, and this is leading Colorado State to issue their highest pre-hurricane season forecast ever, and they've been doing this since 1995. Their forecast now calls for 23 named storms, of those 11 to become hurricanes, and of those, five to become major hurricanes, which would be category three or higher. For a reference point, the 30-year average is 14 named storms, seven named storms, seven hurricanes, three major hurricanes. So what does that mean for us? It means a possibility for more storms, more storms which are larger than what we experienced last Friday, more damage possibly in the community, and more costs of responding. So on that dark note, I will turn it back over to the county administrator.
Thank you, Kevin. Commissioners, we know that that was a lot of information. I'll bring it in for a landing before I hand it back to the commission, I know you, to receive your direction and to provide the opportunity for you all to ask us any questions. You see the level of detail, and again, Commissioners, I know you're used to it, in terms of the way we handle this stuff. We realize that it's among the most important things that we do at the county. You know, we say it all the time, we were the first hurricane-strong community designated by FEMA a couple of years ago. We only say that because we work very hard to continue and to keep that designation. We're going to continue to work around the clock to make our community whole again by leveraging everything that we've talked about, all of our community partnerships, working to secure the federal assistance for all of our citizens, and a lot more. Let me just talk very quickly, Commissioners, about some of the finances at play here, and I'll just hit this very high level. The commission showed a lot of foresight a few years back, and we established a catastrophe fund. Not every county has a catastrophe fund, but it's something that the board established years ago. It's funded at 2% of our general revenue, our general fund expenditures to provide immediate cash flow for natural disasters, including hurricanes and events like this. These reserves are used to cover the costs prior to receiving federal or state reimbursement. The 24 CAT fund was set at $4 million. $500,000 of that we utilized in '24 to cover debris removal costs associated with Hurricane Idalia. Thus far, that leaves $3.5 million. During a declared local state of emergency, the policy authorizes the county administrator utilize the CAT fund for a number of things, including wave fees associated with solid waste and building growth and permit fees. You heard Matt refer to that earlier. Certainly we'll do that. That's preauthorized. That's ready to go. We'll do that. I anticipate, we're just guessing, we think just the cost associated with paying building permit fees for the fund is probably a quarter of a million dollars. We estimate our costs if we contemplate a declaration, and we do, a federal declaration, we contemplate our costs to be in excess, and that's our 12.5%. You heard Kevin and Matt refer to that. If we get that federal designation, we're on the hook for 12.5%, an additional 12.5% is matched by the state of Florida, and the remainder by the federal government. We anticipate those expenses to be over a million dollars. Don't hold me to any of these costs. Debris removal alone, based on our current estimates, right now, of course, you know we're out in the field, that's going to, we think that number's already approaching $7 million. But again, if we receive the federal declaration, we're on the hook for 12.5%. We've got deductibles and other things associated with damage to county buildings. Again, all in, I think of the CAT fund, we're looking north of a million dollars. Again, I just want to put extra emphasis, Commissioners, we're going to be seeking that federal declaration for public assistance and individual assistance. That public assistance, again, that helps reimburse us. I already talked about that. That individual assistance is really critically important, that Matt and Kevin talked about, and whereby, when we do get that designation, as you already heard today, we'll quickly set up those disaster recovery centers throughout the county and assist the federal government in receiving applications immediately from people. People oftentimes get checks written right away, and so it's a quick process once it's declared and once they're set up, and it doesn't take us long to set those up. Also, the small business bridge loan program, short-term 0% loans, this bridge loans, Department of Florida, Department of Commerce is in the process of setting that up now. We know that'll be very helpful. None of this is to say, Commissioners, that we've contemplated everything. And so, I know, I've seen Commissioner Caban's memo, and I certainly know the commission, all of you, have a keen interest in making sure that we address any gaps. There's always gaps. There's always gaps. And so, I'm very happy to have a conversation with the board and to receive your direction tonight on addressing those gaps. Again, as good as we do, and as much as we do, we'll always have those. We try to anticipate them, but it's oftentimes a matter of speed as well and time. And so, very happy to engage in that discussion, Commissioners. Thanks for your patience. Again, a lot of information. Madam Chair, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator, and we certainly want to thank Mr. Peters and Matt Cavell for such a comprehensive report. Just, we just applaud you for all the work that you have done during the bicentennial storm, as well as our most recent tornadoes. It's just incredible work, and I know not only the commission, but the community certainly appreciates all the hard work. And I know you guys are sitting here today, but I know you've got people out in the field, and probably when we conclude this meeting, you guys will be going back out as well. So we can't say enough for all the hard work that you all do around the clock. And I can tell you, you sitting there with the staff, I've called the phone. He's not relegating his duties. He answers the telephone. We appreciate the county administrator around the clock, all the updates that we have been provided. And of course, we've got a comprehensive report here in item number 15, but I'm going to give way for the Commissioners. I believe I see Commissioner O'Keefe in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a motion to allow us to start, so move to accept staff report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion.
And I know that, given the letter, I don't, certainly open to friendly amendments, but I want us to get started. Other things, this is a place for other people's stuff. I just wanted to thank, can't thank you enough, to our staff and to the emergency management and response team. And I'm going to start back actually on our April storm that, I don't know if you can say it pales in comparison, but it just, right now, we're dealing with this, this May one. But April, I particularly want to thank the comms team and Public Works for especially the localized response and localized messaging to Capitol and chairs that we're dealing with significant flooding and the high-water vehicles getting everyone in and out, and I appreciate that a lot. And I know the folks out there do. I know a lot of concerns from them were on areas that are floodplains where homes were built before our comprehensive code, and I appreciate all the questions and answers on staff from that. And in a couple of weeks, I know I'm meeting with you all to kind of get a history and to kind of have something to address those concerns of those folks that have been longstanding. Let's see. And I don't know what it was, and I don't want to know, but Commissioner Caban, I want to thank you also, whatever you did to help get those P O Ds. I know they were important for your district, and Appalachia was very important for us. Then, let's see here. I want to give credit and just recognize also City of Tallahassee Utilities, while I have it. They have, I know a lot of people are still without power, but I've thought their communication and response and effort has been incredible. And along with that, if I haven't said it twice already, our comms team, what we've been putting out is incredible. And having experienced being a citizen in Hermine and Michael and all the others, the communication that provides clarity is critical for people to not create more chaos and stress and uncertainty. And I know just, it's just impressive. And then, I'll save motion on report for this later, but I know with that, particularly in the April storm, we had a number of sewer spills from the city's utility system, both before that last year and in particular in my district and others, I think. And so, I'll be coming back on that, but just appreciate everyone's response. And I know there are a lot of people still suffering. We're still getting calls, and we're still getting, it's devastating, talking to people and seeing them, the situations they're in, particularly in Myers Park and some areas like that. And for the most part, everyone's very appreciative for all their support, resources that we're getting out. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Caban.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Point of clarification. So right now, we have a motion on the floor to accept the status report. If we vote on this motion, is there still room for more motions?
No, you can amend it. Do a substitute motion.
No, my motion's completely different. And so, like, my question is, if we vote on this just to accept the report, right, can that, can we, are we, is there more motions allowed to go down on this particular item?
I think that would be raised during commission time. But what I'm saying is, you could do a substitute motion to accept this item and add whatever you want to add.
Okay.
Madam Chair, on point?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Commissioner Caban, if you don't mind me, Madam Chair.
No, just on point.
Yes, ma'am. To your point, I think, because it's specifically on the thing dealing with your letter, if you wanted to amend his motion, that would be the right way to go about it, because it is germane to this item.
Okay.
So you could either make a substitute motion, or you could have asked to amend, as the chair has said.
Okay. Thank you. First point of business, I don't want to convolute a catastrophic storm on Friday to take away some attention that I would like to bring to the flooding event that we had in April. And really, I just want to give a true sincere thank you to the county administrator and also Brent Powell and Public Works. I prepared just a small gesture from our office on behalf of District Two for each of you. Prepared this before we had this storm, so I just want to give it to you briefly. But really, I do want to give a sincere thank you, Brent Powell, your team. I have nothing but just positive to say of, you know, the grit and effort that it took to repair Sir Richard Road in one day. I mean, it was just truly incredible, and I want to give a very deep and sincere thank you. Moving on, I do want to pivot to talk about the weather event that we had on Friday. I also have a long list of thank yous, too many to say in one meeting, but also the county minister, I'd like to give you a sincere thank you. Madam Chair, your ability to declare a county emergency, I think, allowed, you know, staff to move very, very efficiently and quickly. And on behalf of my district, I do want to say thank you for that. You know, the last four days, I would, to describe, I would say is pretty emotional, you know. We, interacting with folks in our community, seeing them come through the water and food distributions, you know, folks, people's lives were truly impacted, seeing people, you know, come day after day, the same people, you know, with tears in their eyes. Folks in our community, there are a handful of people who truly lost everything. And, you know, what happened on Friday, you see on the news, but it's not something you really intend to see in your hometown. And so, what I've done, I have a bunch of items that I would like to discuss, but first and most importantly, I want to pass and around the letter that I sent this morning, so it can be submitted in the record. And then also, the Chamber of Commerce actually sent a letter of support that I just, before the meeting, that I would like to also distribute. But Commissioners, if you could indulge with me, there are people in our community that are not fortunate enough to have some of the help that some of us are up here, and there are businesses in our community that have truly been affected. And I have, I'm greatly concerned that businesses in our rural communities are not going to be able to come back from this event that we had on Friday. Whether it's restaurants in our rural community that had, you know, inventory spoil, or businesses that had trees or wind damage, you know, I really would like us to have a conversation about how can we help. So what I propose here is, you know, a million dollars that I would like us to basically give the county administrator. We talked earlier today, and there are stipulations and there are restrictions based on previous emergencies that we've had. I believe we referenced COVID, if that's the correct, Mr. Administrator. But basically, this is a time for us to come together and act swiftly in order to help folks in our rural communities. I would like to give a budget, or release some funds to the county administrator, and put out a program, and start getting money quicker. I know that we have federal money coming. I know that we have state money coming, but I think folks need help now. And, you know, as a board, you know, we've done a lot to help other demographics and other parts of our community, whether we're here, we've talked about just recently, a couple of months ago, allocating roughly shy of a million dollars to homelessness. We've shelled out roughly $1.5 million to our service providers, right? What I'm talking about right here, right now, is giving help to taxpayers in our community that are invested in our community. They're here, they live every single day. They drive on the same roads that we drive on, you know, they're in our neighborhoods, they're in our back doors. These are the people that I really want us to help. So what I'm going to propose is a substitute motion to empower the county administrator with a million-dollar budget to create a micro grant program that we can award to homestead owners and to small businesses in our rural communities.
And that includes accepting the report as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Your substitute motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Commissioner Mannix.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Mannix, I do like the idea of the program that you're trying to implement. I couldn't remember, I think, did you specify specifically that this million dollars that we're looking to expend would be within the rural Leon County area?
Yes.
Okay. That was one caveat, that if we're going to move in this direction, I would recommend that we do Leon County residents, the rural area, and that, you know, we would, you know, ask the city to consider anything inside city limits. That's one. Two, Mr. Administrator, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, ma'am?
Please.
How fast can we get something like this up? Because the other piece of it is, is, you know, we're talking about a bridge to the bridge, if I may describe it that way, much like we did with CARES. And the thing about the CARES thing was, we were able to implement that pretty quickly in a way that we could get the money out. But then, what, months later, we were able to have the help from the federal government. So the plan here, the idea here, is that we would be able to get this done rather quickly, to be able to get it out quickly. But what I'm trying to prevent here is that, about the same time that the federal money comes out, our money's ready. That doesn't work. If we can do it within the next month, something like that, with criteria that we've used in past, and the CARES money and things like that, then I think it makes more sense. But just, can you talk to me a little bit about what your thought processes may be into the speediness that we were able to do this?
Yes, Commissioners, thank you. Yes, speed is going to be critical. As you know, Commissioner, we have a lot of experience standing up programs like this. We probably stood up more than a dozen during COVID from scratch, infrastructure, funding, everything. And so, I don't minimize that, because it is an effort. But however, if that's the priority of the board, needless to say, our intent would be to fill that gap between the federal and state assistance and to get that money to people in need, most in need, as quickly as possible. And so, yeah, the bridge to the bridge is what we would be talking about. And so, we would try to stand up, you know, that infrastructure in days, and again, not weeks. And then, again, the processing of those things, I would, you know, keep the board abreast of, because it does take a little time to process checks and all of that sort of thing. And yes, very, very, speed and immediacy would be the name of the game in standing this up.
specificity around split. We talked about residential homeowners, homestead owners, as well as businesses, and then being able to measure the effect. So, you know, there are a lot of homes, because of loss of electricity, I had to throw everything in their in their, in their, in their refrigerators and freezer, deep freezers away. You know, things like that. And then, and then thinking through also, what are the types of things that we're going to, to say that the money can be spent on versus not spent on? So like, like I said, you know, lost food or car damage or, or roof damage, stuff like that, you know, some of that stuff would be covered by the FEMA stuff, you know, but if, if, are you, are you thinking through, and I know this is really off the cuff, how to be able to think through the, the immediate short-term needs of our citizens that were affected and what those things may look like versus, you know, things that were, were more long-term needs or something that, that could wait for, for the FEMA, are you trying to specify between those two? Or, and I know there's a lot of, a lot of questions, but it's just, we, we, we've never quite done anything like this and what my fear is, is that we won't have enough detail to it. Well, as a commission, as we vote on this, I would like to have enough detail to it to know exactly what we're, what we're, what we're moving because we're giving authorization to do it before we have our next meeting, we have enough detail to it to be able to, to feel comfortable that, that we're not, that when we send this money out, that it's going to be a success.
Okay. And before the county administrator speaks, we want to make clear, Commissioner Caban, this is for businesses, I guess, and residences in the unincorporated areas, Mrs. County Administrator.
Yes, ma'am.
In the unincorporated area.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So quick response and I'll be very quick. The, the idea is individuals, food, medicine, short-term emergency housing.
Great.
And for businesses, damages not covered by insurance or, or the, or, or other.
Now, we're talking capital and non-capital damages?
It, it could be, if, if you have a business that's, that's uninsured or underinsured and, and that sort of thing, we would, I assume that, again, that's, that's the intent of the motion.
Right. I, I, it's my final comment, Madam Chair. Commissioner Caban, this is very forward thinking of you and I do think that it's something that we've done in the past, we've never quite done it for storms. But moving forward, the thought may be that if we ever have other storms, storm events like this, the expectation is that we'll do something like this. I think that we need to be very clear about creating thresholds around when we would consider implementing something like this policy-wise. So along with your motion, Mr. Administrator, if we could, do you think it would be advantageous for us to come up with some kind of policy that talks about a threshold or, or threshold or, or certain circumstances where, where we might be able to consider something like this? So every, every time we have a big storm, there's not an expectation the county's going to throw out money. Is there, is there some kind of, something we can put in place to, to give us some?
Have an agenda item come back.
And we, absolutely we could. And I think your, your existing CAT fund policy gives you a lot of flexibility within the CAT fund policy. So I think that's good. I think that's a good thing to work from and it gives us the ability to do things like this because all of my emergencies are so different.
Final, 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 so can you explain to me the CAT fund? What's the difference between the CAT fund and what we'd be implementing here?
Well, the CAT fund would, would essentially be how we pay for it.
Okay.
And again, that CAT fund does authorize certain things to happen like waiving of building permits and, and, and solid waste disposal fees and other things. But again, this is a unique circumstance and again, we're used to hurricanes and that sort of thing, which you have time to prepare for. The damage tends to be wind and water related. It, it's very widespread. Here you have a very concentrated number of people whose, in some cases, homes were absolutely destroyed. You know what I mean? So it's again, but you do have your flexibility within this CAT fund to, and, and one of the things that I would make and for the board to consider, if you would include in the motion, would be to authorize the county administrator to utilize the CAT fund for the grant program.
And that, and the CAT fund would be where the, where the funds would come from, this million dollars. Okay, would you add that as an amendment?
You have a problem adding that. Okay. Now, commissioners, we have public hearings scheduled for six o'clock. If you think we can wrap up this discussion and vote.
Madam Chair.
We will try, otherwise I will recess us until after our public hearings. Yes, Commissioner Caban.
Yes, I think if I'm hearing Commissioner Maddox correctly, so in my motion, I will include to authorize the county administrator to, to use a CAT fund for this. Additionally, to include in my, in my substitute motion in our next meeting to bring back the, the CAT fund policy for a status report.
An agenda item. Okay. And we second that motion. Okay, you're okay. Good, good, good. Any other, I see Commissioner Welch, Commissioner Welch.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I'll be brief. You know, I have some concerns, but not in the way that you might think. I think about the golden rule when I think about this, right? If this thing had cut a swath along Thomasville Road and through Colorado Estates, I'd have the same, I'd want to do the same thing you're doing, right? So I'm inclined to support this. My, my concern, number one is, so this is a question with the county administrator, this would be coming out of fund balance? This would be coming out of a CAT fund that we've got reserved specifically for this type of thing?
Yes, we, we budget each year 2% of our general fund revenues and we establish that in a CAT fund.
Okay. And you, you're confident you could stand this thing up quickly and distribute funds quickly?
Yes.
Okay. And my, my bigger concern is a lot of this damage was done in the city limits, right?
Some of.
I mean, I, I feel like the campus areas and, you know, Pensacola Street, places like that, the, so you're, I guess my question, just in brevity, would be, you're okay limiting this to the unincorporated area or do we have some kind of agreement or some kind of knowledge of the city's willingness to prop up a similar program?
Commissioner, yes, Commissioner Caban.
West Highway 90, west, west State Road 20 in Woodville are three areas in my district that are unincorporated area that were in the direct path of the hur, of the tornadoes. Yes, they did cut through city limits. I intend to, in commissioner time, after, at the end of this meeting, to propose a resolution that we ask the city to do the same thing in city limits.
Madam Chair, on point, I'm going to have comments, we might want to come back.
Okay, commissioners, it's 20 minutes to six. I don't think we're going to be able to conclude this. We have a public hearing scheduled at six, so we are going to recess this discussion. We will resume the discussion after our public hearings at six o'clock. So please be back promptly and at six, it's already been publicly noticed. Thank you. Okay.[1764.69]